Okay. Whatever you're ready for.
You guys ready? Yep. All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Monday, February 5th, public meeting of the Board of Garrett County Commissioners. I want to welcome everybody here in attendance and online. Bear with me, please, as I battle a slight case of laryngitis, to which I'm sure a lot of people are very happy about that.[24.84][24.84](Laughter). If we could, if you would please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and then Commissioner Titchell will lead us into the invocation. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would bow with me for a word of prayer, please. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you again for the day that you've given us. Lord, we thank you for everyone that's in attendance here today. And, Lord, we just ask that everything that we say and do here would be pleasing to you. And, Lord, we just continue to thank you for all the blessings that you give us, and we do this in thy precious holy name. Amen.
Mr. Moore, are there any additions, leishens, or corrections to the public meeting agenda?
There are none.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion to the second agenda approved by mutual consent. Any... Everybody got a copy of the minutes in advance of the meeting? Are there any questions, changes, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve all the minutes, including, I may remind everybody, we did go into executive session on January 23rd, and that will also approve the executive meeting minutes as well. Can I get a motion to approve all those minutes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion to the second, question on the motion. We do have only one item on the agenda today, which actually isn't a public meeting agenda item. At the conclusion of this meeting, we will go to a public hearing, so we will adjourn the public meeting to go to a public hearing, and this will be on the Homestead tax credit. Before we do that, however, I do want to make an announcement, and then we'll take any public comments or questions that don't pertain to the Homestead credit. Excuse me. The only announcement I have, unless anyone else has any others, is just to remind everybody that our next meeting will be Tuesday, February 20th, here at the courthouse at 4:00. Having said that, any other announcements? Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments that relate to anything outside of the Homestead tax credit? All right, hearing nothing, what we'll do next is we'll take a motion to adjourn the public meeting and, at the same time, open the public hearing on the Homestead tax credit.
Make a motion that we close the meeting and open up...
Public hearing. All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All right, the public meeting is adjourned. We will now open the public hearing on the Homestead tax credit, and I will turn the floor over to our Director of Finance, Mr. Scott Weeks.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, we're going to talk about the Homestead tax credit, so I thought we'd start off by giving a definition of it and giving a better explanation for those that aren't aware what it is, so I'll wait till Mr. Moore pulls the slide up. Okay, this is the definition, and I'm probably just going to read it to you. To help owners deal with the large assessment increases on their principal residence, state law has established the Homestead property tax credit. So this is a state program. The Homestead credit limits the increase in taxable assessments each year to a fixed percentage, and the law is, in Maryland, every county and municipality in Maryland is required to limit taxable assessment increases to 10% or less each year. So, over the last two cycles, we've seen assessments increasing rapidly. By law, you cannot pay more taxes on the assessable base than 10% increase each year. That is the law. So, a lot of counties, what they do is they lower that to help the primary residents of each county. It gives them a tax break. It doesn't take the tax away, it just defers or delays that into future years. I want to give you an example on the next slide. This is something I went over at budget time last year. It's a little small, so bear with it. I'm just trying to give you a simple example of how the Homestead tax credit works. Let's say you had $100,000 property, and if you got reassessed, all properties get reassessed every three years by the State Department of Assessment and Taxation. So let's say you were reassessed, and it went up to $130,000. That's a $30,000 increase. Under a normal phase-in without a Homestead in place, that is the blue column, your assessment in year one would get up to $110,000. That would be your tax amount of $1,0162. This just includes Garrett County's tax rate now of $1.056 cents per $100 of assessment. In year two, that assessment would get up to $120,000, and you would pay $1,267, so you can see the increase each year. And then in year three, it would go up to $130,000, and you can see the increase in tax, $1,373. So it's just the $30,000 split over three years and a 10% increase, or not 10%, $10,000 increase each year. Garrett County currently has a Homestead tax credit in place of 5%. So this is what your current bill would look like. It delays or defers that tax revenue over a six-year period, for this particular example, instead of a three-year. So it's giving the homeowner, spreading that tax over an additional three years for a total of six years. What we are proposing today is to lower that Homestead tax credit percentage to 3%, and you can see it in the green example there, that it adds an additional three years. So, under a traditional, if you are a non-resident of Garrett County, this is what your tax bill would look like. If you are a resident of Garrett County, it's your primary residence, it would be the green section, so you'd go from three years to, what is that, nine years before we would receive that tax. That's what the proposal is today. If you go to the next slide, this is sort of how we stack up in the state. State of Maryland is at 10%, that's the law. They max theirs out at 10%. There's three counties that have 10% in place, one at 7%. There's 11 counties right now that are at 5%. Three, or four, at 4%, and then there's, we would be at 3 if this passes, at 3%. One at 2%, and one at 0%. So, you can see that most counties in the state are giving a tax credit, a break to their primary residents. To give you an idea, at 5% are projections next year, there's about 3,866 residents that have applied and have been approved for the homeowner's tax credit. And dropping it to 3% for next year will add about 1,185 residents, so it'll give additional people a deferral or a delay in that tax. Now, what I do want to encourage people to do, because last year when we brought this up, there was some coworkers that came to me, and they were asking about it. I was like, "You've got to make sure that you're signed up for it to receive it. It is optional. You don't have to apply if you qualify." So a lot of people that purchase their residence in the last five years or so, every time you purchase your residence or a new property, you have to apply for this. Couple of my coworkers, I'd say like three that I talked to, weren't even signed up for this. So a lot of people don't even know they're not signed up for it. I encourage you to go on State Department of Assessment and Taxation's website. You can find out if you're signed up for it, or you can go down to the local office, and they can help you there. So, I want to encourage you to do that. Dropping it from 5% to 3% based on our projections for next year, and these are estimates at this time. If you recall, last year, Group 2 was reassessed. This year, Group 3 is reassessed. This has those Group 3 numbers estimated at this point in time, but dropping the Homestead tax credit from 5% to 3%, we defer or delay an additional $171,000. So it's not a big revenue loss for us, and it's not a revenue loss in the future years, regardless, unless property assessments start to decline. So, we're hopeful that that doesn't happen. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you for any questions.
Before we go to public questions or comment, are there any questions from the other commissioners? I think just a couple of comments for clarity's sake. This is not a, this is irrelevant of the tax rate. The tax rate is what it is. This tax, it's called the Homestead tax credit. It really should be called a Homestead tax deferral. It's not crediting anything, it's just spreading out the theoretical increase because of the rise in assessments at a current rate. So we're not talking about anything with the rate, we're just talking about how that's spread out over the increase in assessments, because that's what we're seeing. The rate conversation will come in at budget time. So even if, if at some point in time, we have the conversation about decreasing tax rates, that doesn't negate what's going on with the Homestead tax credit. Another very important part to realize is you must be a resident of Garrett County to qualify. That is the only qualifying factor. So if you're a full-time resident of the county, you can qualify for this, and as Mr. Weeks said, you can go to the local assessment office and ask that question, or go online at SSTAT and look it up. But you do have to apply. It isn't ju, even if you lived in Garrett County and you had it at Property A, and you sold Property A and moved to Property B, you would have to reapply for the Homestead tax credit because you moved. So if you're in that group, don't just automatically assume that it followed with you, you would have to reapply at the new address for that. Just a couple of points for clarity. We will now go, excuse me, to any questions or comments, and I'll start with Mike Bell, because we know that he has some comments to make. So, Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
I have some information here that I'll put here, but it's interesting. I don't, I think I can agree with everything Scott said. It was a good description with the elaboration, and it's accurate and precise, but I have taken the position for a long time that the, this is basically an assessment. Do I not get my slide?
Yes. You're ready for your slide?
This is basically an assessment. It says that the taxable value, there's three values. There's a market value of what it would actually sell for. There's an assessed value, which is an estimate by the state, like you said, about what it would sell for, because the property tax is the only tax where you don't observe the base. You know what the income tax base is, because everybody fills out that income tax return. You know what the sales tax base is, because businesses fill out returns on what they collect. But the property tax base is the market value of your house, but your house doesn't sell every year. Not all the houses sell. So they have to estimate it. And Garrett County does that better than most counties. So I don't disagree with anything that Scott said. I think he had it exactly right. My perspective and why I think it's the worst way to get property tax relief, my perspective is to take somewhat broader view. I have three panels in this table. The top panel is what the information would look like if the limit was 3%. The middle one is what it is currently under the 5%, and then this, the last one, is what it would be under 10%. Now, the problem is that, over time, different properties increase differently at different rates, and that even happens over the three-year phase-in. So during that period, the rates, the share of the taxes somebody pays changes in terms of relationship to the market value. So the taxes, 1%, 1.05%, but they're phased in at different rates. So, if we start with what we actually have, the first column is how much taxes you would pay on these, I have six different properties. Three are owner-occupied houses that qualify the Homestead credit. One is a house that either is rental or a second home, and two businesses, because they don't qualify for the Homestead credit either. It only applies to owner-occupied houses. And I had assumed that there was a certain value in the end of the previous cycle, and based on, and that there was a new value as of January 1st, 2024, which is the beginning of the next three-year cycle. So, if we take those market values, estimated market values, and apply the tax rate, this is what the tax payments would be for each of those houses. So the first house is assumed to be worth $200,000. The second one, $750,000. The third one, $1.5 million. Then there's a second home, a rental property, it's $1.5 million, and a business at $750, and another business at $150,000. So this is what the tax payments would be in at quite $102,000. This next column is the share of taxes paid. Now, if the taxes are distributed evenly and fairly across all homeowners, the share of taxes paid should be the share of your property value. The tax I paid should be the same share of taxes collected as the value, as the share of my property is of total tax base. So, if you looked at the values that are on another sheet, these shares are the same values as they are for taxes. But then, we go to 2022, and different properties grow at different rates. So, and the three residential properties are phased in. So I said, all right, based on experience, the lower-value properties increased about 20%. The middle increased about 50%. The higher-value properties increased about 80% although in some lakefront places, it went up to over 100%. And then businesses were at different rates. So, if you looked at the taxes paid for that, this uses the same tax rate, because that's like Paul said, different. The low-value property share of taxes paid goes from 2.5% to 2.7%. The next one goes from 11.5% to 10%, so it benefits directly from the homeowner's Homestead credit. This lower-value property benefits from the Homestead credit, but not as much, so its share goes up. The highest-value property sees the greatest decline in its share of taxes paid. It goes from 27% to 20%. And then all of the other properties, the rental or second home and the businesses, have their full value brought into the tax base. So they're paying taxes on their full value. But since the other properties don't have their full value brought into the tax base, their share of taxes paid in 2027 is higher, 31%, than it would be if everybody was taxed on their full value of property. So for the second home, it goes from 27% to 31%. For the business, it goes from 6% to 7%, and for the other business, it goes from 20%. So the three properties that don't qualify for the Homestead credit in 2027, at the end of the cycle, are paying a larger share of the property taxes than the share of the property tax that they own. So that is building some wedge between what would be a fair distribution of taxes and what the actual is. If you had everybody fully taxed in 2027, this would be the share of the taxes. But the first three are not fully taxed, so this is the share. Now, let's look at the tax savings between the no Homestead and the current Homestead. The lowest-value property saves $89 in taxes. So Scott's right, everybody saves money, homeowners save money. The next one saves $2,700, and the most expensive property saves $10,000 in taxes. So almost $13,000 in taxes are deferred to the future when those assessed values are brought onto the tax base. Remember, the assessed values for the three that don't qualify are brought in all in 2027. The share of tax savings, 78% of this $13,000 of the taxes foregone, 78% accrues to the highest-priced house that's increasing the fastest in the market value. So, to me, that's why I don't like this. It gives the most tax relief, 78% of the tax relief, goes to the most expensive property that's growing the fastest. There are other ways to give tax relief, and that's why, if you want to reduce taxes, I would argue you should look at some of these other tools. So that's, my first concern is that most of the tax relief goes to the highest-value properties, increasing it most rapidly. So let's take another part of what this is. Let's look at the tax savings as a share of what their taxes would be if we didn't have a Homestead credit. So, instead of paying 2520, this property pays, the lowest value pays 2431. So that's a 3.5% savings in the tax liability that they have to pay. The next homeowner that qualifies for this reduces their tax payments by 22.8% over this three-year period, because they're not fully taxing, they're deferring some of it in the future. The most expensive property that's increasing the fastest reduces its tax liability over this three-year period by almost 36%, more than a third. So, again, most of the assistance, most of the relief, is going to the most expensive house that's growing the fastest, and the three that don't qualify don't get any property tax relief. Another way to look at this is to say, all right, what impact does this relief tool have on the actual burden that individual property owners pay? And I define the burden as the tax that they're actually paying in 2027 divided by the estimated market value from January 1st, 2024. That's an effective tax rate, the taxes paid relative to the market value of the property. So under the current system, the lowest-value residential property pays about 1% in taxes, and that's a little bit lower than the three that don't qualify, because the tax rate's 1.05%. But look at the effective tax rate for the next middle-value house, it's .8. Highest-priced house that's increasing fastest in value, the effective tax rate, or the burden of the tax payment relative to the value of the home, is .68. It's about 30% less than the effective tax rate for the lowest-value house that still qualifies and benefits from the Homestead credit. So, to me, this is another perspective on the inequities that this particular property tax relief tool results in. So how much, how much did the share of taxes for each of these properties change over this three-year period? And we saw that the, we saw that the tax, this is the tax saving as a percentage of the taxes they wouldn't pay otherwise, and this is the change in the share of taxes compared to what it would otherwise. If everybody's brought into the tax base by 2027, these are the shares that people would pay. Lowest-value price would pay 2.5% of the tax paid, but under the current system, it's 2.7% of taxes paid. So its share of the taxes paid is higher, and that's why this is the negative sum, this says reduced by. So their share of the base is actually increased by 8%. The other two properties decrease because not all of the value is taxable, and the most expensive property that's growing the fastest has their share decreased by over a quarter, 26%. Now, the share for the three that don't qualify all go up, because they're paying more taxes, because these aren't, the value of these properties is not being brought into the tax base. So when do those properties get brought into the tax base? For the lowest income value, they're brought into the tax base by 2029, increasing 5% a year. And we see that for the three that don't qualify for any Homestead credit, they're fully brought into the tax base in 2027. Now, for this middle-priced house, it's fully brought into the tax base in 2033, and for the wealthiest, the most expensive house that's growing the fastest, its 2024 market value is not fully brought into the tax base until 2037. Now, between 2027 and 2037, it's brought in in 2037, that's 10 years. Remember, there's an assessment every three years. So, these are going to change values every three years, but the value, the market value of this house from 2024 is not fully brought in until 2037. So, these initial measures of inequity are amplified over this 10-year period, because the other ones are being reassessed, and the businesses and the rentals and non-resident owners are not being reassessed. So, the lower panel is the same sort of view of what the inequities are, if you have a 10% assessment limit, and the top one is the same thing that you would have if you had a 3% limit. For example, for that wealthy house, its share of savings goes down from 78 to 76, because the other houses are getting some savings. But its savings as a share of the taxes they would pay otherwise goes up from 35 to 39. The effective rate changes incrementally, 68.68 to 6.67, still a third less than that, and it's not fully brought into the tax base until 2044. And remember, there are three-year reassessments of all the other properties. So, my concern is the distributional impacts of the Homestead credit generally, and what are happening to those inequities, distributional consequences, if you go from 3 to 10. If you go to 10, it reduces those distortions, but it doesn't eliminate it. Doesn't eliminate it unless you assess everything full value. So this is, this is simply looking at the distributional implications of an assessment limit to start with. That's a state program, as Scott pointed out. That's not a program that the county decides on what to do, except they can set the rig. And yes, if it goes to 3%, then these, then these folks, the folks, the folks that are paying taxes will pay less in taxes. They save $245,000 to $11,000. But still, 76% of the tax saving goes to the most valuable property, increasing the fastest. So I'm just saying, this is, distributional consequences should be part of the discussion. I acknowledge and appreciate the fact that there are a lot of other policy objectives that they have to deal with at the same time. It's just, it might need to be part of the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thank you, Mike, and thank you, commissioners, for doing us the opportunity.
Hey Frank, let me call a timeout real quick. Anyone that wants to speak, we'll definitely let you do that. Just state your name for the record and then.
Frank Shat, I live in Mount Lake Park. And I, I had a brief conversation with Mike about this ahead of time, and I think I understand it, but this question is maybe more for Scott at the moment. The way I see this, it's a tax deferral, but when does that deferred obligation come due? Let's say I get a deferral for three years, but I sell my house at the end of year two, two and a half. What happens to that pot of money that was deferred? Does that, does that do with settlement for the new buyer or?
Yes, it does the full cash value where it was at in the phase of the assessment.
And I, but I pay the deferred funds because I'm getting out before the end of the three year period?
You're getting a, a tax break or a tax deferral, that'll be passed, the tax burden will be passed on to the new owner right away.
To the new owner, okay.
Yes.
But now if I stay there longer and I keep getting deferrals, but the tax rates or the assessed values keep going up, is my home getting deeper? Am I digging a deeper hole with this?
Your credit.
Your credit.
Yes. Yeah.
The deferral continues.
Yeah, Mike, Mike did a good job pointing that out when he gave the example. It's 10 years out and they're going to be reassessed three times during that time. So in the rising.
Market.
Market, the assessments could go up significantly over that point in time. So my, my fear is they remain stagnant or begin to drop, so.
I'm not sure what you meant by digging a hole. You're the beneficiary of the homestead credit because as Scott said, the purpose of this is to lower your taxes. And in all three of those panels, over the three years, the taxes on the three properties that qualify for the homestead exemption have lower taxes. It accomplishes that objective.
But it's been deferred, it hasn't been.
Well, it deferred, it deferred because it can only, your, your taxable value can only increase at now 5% a year. So if you keep, your, your assessment will keep going up at 5% a year and based on the market value of January 1st, 24th. So that market value is fully brought into the base in 2037. So you're not on the hook for anything. You're the beneficiary of this because as, as, as Scott said, your taxes are reduced.
Right, for, I guess forever.
No, they're reduced.
But when's the due date to recover those funds? That's the very easiest answer is you don't have to.
As he said, as he said, he's anticipating lower increase in property values. If your property value increases less than 27, 21%, the full value has been, can be brought in every three years.
Okay.
And he's saying that, okay, so in 2037, you'll, your 2024 value will be brought in. Now, like he said, there's been three reassessments, so you're accumulating a deferred value. And if you sell your house, the next person pays on the full market value of the house that it sold. And you can't take that deferral to the next house. And that's one of the other downsides of this tool. It started in California and as you stay there longer and you miss these reassessments, your pool of deferred value keeps going up. It'll start going down depending on if you get less than 21% increase in value. But it'll be after about 10 or 15 years, you're going to go, well, if I move, I'm going to have to pay three times this question property debt. So the cost of moving becomes higher and this over time becomes an incentive to postpone a movement.
To the commissioners, the intent of this was to ease the burden on the homeowner with the rising property values and consequent rising tax pay. Is that, was that was the intent of it?
Correct.
Okay. Are there other ways to do it where Mike's issue of equity, if you will, between the $200,000 house and the $1.5 million house? Is there another way to look at that or is that just inevitable when you go down this road?
I think there, there are different tools that you can use, there's different ways that you can do it. What I don't think is the amount of assessment increase, which Garrett County saw the highest percent in the state. Even if we cut taxes, which is one way to do it, you're still gonna, conceivably, you're still going to pay more because the assessment continues to rise. So this is one tool in the toolkit, not the only tool in the toolkit. So even if you employ other means to help offset that, what this does is it can smooth it out over time. And we saw houses at the lake increase 100% in assessed value. And so the tax burden on that regardless of what the rate is, is significant. And part of the goal here is if you're a full-time resident of Garrett County, you qualify for this. If you're a full-time resident of Garrett County, you also pay income tax to Garrett County. Non-residents don't, right? So there's a theory that by providing this, regardless of all of that stuff, you incentivize becoming a full-time resident. And if you can do that, you know, one of the biggest problems we have in this county, I don't think anyone will disagree with, is we have declining in aging population. If you can increase population by getting second homeowners, third homeowners to decide to become residents here, that's a good thing. And then you also increase your income tax revenue on top of that. So to answer your question directly, are there other ways to do it? Yeah, there are some other ways that you can do different things. But the reason to employ this isn't just necessarily to defer taxes for people. Like there's other reasons to do it the way that we're talking about doing. And currently, like I said, we're not employing a new program. What we're doing is modifying from five to 3% to spread, spread that increase out when you're seeing increases of 80, 90, 100% in assessments. That's a good, good question. Thanks for that. Any other questions or comments? Del.
One little bite, so. Rock, oil, and accident barrel. I, I would speak to support your proposal here. I would comment on Mike's slide was just one picture in a certain time, just at this time. Even if this defer, is deferred out, like with these examples with these homes, some people sell their houses and when they sell them, that, that, whatever that sale was, market value will keep kicking all up. So he's only pointing out five examples. And you have unapproved property and you have business properties and everything else that would pay the same rate regardless of where this credit comes into play. But the other thing with this credit, by doing this, it reduces the amount of property that people pay, but each year you get a total tax, tax collection. And that tax collection determines what the budget is going to be and they need to set the tax rate. So the big discussion has to be some other point that you've pointed out is what's the tax rate want to be? If you look at constant yield, if you strictly took constant yield, then everybody's property rate would be what it is prior to the assessment, but what it is now. And so that would have a huge, bigger impact on everybody, not just the people that get the deferred assessment. And I would comment that it's, it's a really good thing that we, Garrett County benefited from, from actually the pandemic because people wanted out of the city, they came here and it then, what we're seeing in increased values of the lake has to be, I know a lot of people disagree, but it is a good thing when you got people paying four, five, six million dollars for a piece of property up here, they want to pay 40, 50,000 dollars in taxes and a lot of them even have kids in school. And so by, by us benefiting with all these increases in the taxes, we got to be, realize that there are people, there are people, the people live here and myself, and I've had my property for 30 years. The taxes are going up, I get the benefit of the tax credit, but my assessments, mine is, is about 34% in one year. They talk about ones of the 30, more than 30, 40%. So I appreciate it and appreciate what you guys are doing to reduce it down to help, to help relieve that burden. I'm probably not going to live long enough to see how it's deferred in the future if I stay where I am, but most people, there are a lot of people around the lake that don't stay there that long and they sell and then if there's, if they're, if they're living here and there's a deferred amount, like you said, it ends up immediately and you'll start to get, realize that taxes for whatever the assessed value can, without that one. I support your decision.
Thank you. And that's a good point. Scott mentioned that, you know, once that property sells, it resets at zero. Yeah, and that's important too.
One other thing I would comment on this deferred amount too, when you defer, every two years of the reassessment. So even, even though this amount of money is deferred, you're going to get reassessed and you're probably going to go up for more and if you don't qualify for the way the amount lives, whatever you had in the bank, if you will, will apply to those reassessments. So it could go a lot, lot of years before you ever use up this deferred amount.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Butch Elbig. I'd like to interject something on Mike's presentation there. I understand his concern for equity, but if you look at every other system of taxation in the United States, it's based on different levels of income. What he's looking at here is with the assumption that everything's equal. To me, that's called socialism. I don't think it's, I don't think that will ever work if you go with that assumption that everyone ought to be treated equally because it's not that way, state taxes, federal taxes, any other tax system in the country. So I think this situation is the best that you can do at the time. The real problem lies here downstate when we have people that is pushing the assessments tremendously higher, not knowing what the average income of people in Garrett County is. I see where that's helped the property values, but it doesn't help a person that's here making the home here for their entire life that has no intention of speculating in selling that property. So I would support the reduction of this. You had mentioned that when you set the budget initially.
That's true.
Can I respond a little bit?
Well, I don't want to get in the back and forth. This is a public hearing on the 3%, not necessarily defending your presentation.
This, this property tax relief tool gives the most property tax relief to the most expensive properties increasing fastest. I agree with you, property tax relief should be focused on people who need the relief because they have limited income. We have a homeowner, homeowner's tax credit and it does just that. If you have eight thousand, and it's really a credit, it's not deferred, you don't have to pay the tax. And if you have $8,000 income or less, you don't pay any property tax regardless of where you live or regardless of what the bill is. And my point in this is I would prefer that kind of property tax relief because it focuses it on people most in need. I don't know what the ability to pay the tax is of any of these. This is an illustration because it's only based on assessed value. We don't know what their ability is to pay the tax. So I would agree with you that we should put more effort and attention to property tax relief focused on individuals, their, and their income and ability to pay. Only 500 people in the county applied for the homeowner's tax credit.
Because it's a judge.
Pardon?
It's because it's a judge. If you have anything at all, if you were self-employed and you took out an IRA, they look at everything you own, IRAs included by this whole. So for you to qualify for that, it doesn't work.
I think that's right. It's based on total household income and I would prefer attention to be based, post, attention focused on how to strengthen that as a system of property tax relief, then I would do away with this because I don't think, this gives the most relief to the highest valued houses that are increasing fastest. I'd rather give the most relief to people that don't have the income to pay it. And I think that you're right, it needs to have structural changes and it needs to be expanded. And I'd like to see that discussion more than focusing on this 5% or 3%. I would agree with everything that, that you've said in that regard. I don't think it's socialism.
Right. All right. Are there any other questions or comments on the proposal to change the homestead property tax credit from 5 to 3%? So if you come up with something, we will keep the comment period open until Thursday, February the 19th. So upon.